It's six o'clock and I am going to call the meeting to order. If you will rise for the pledge of allegiance and stay standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sorry, I was telling these guys I'm your pinch prayer today, so this will be off script.
Oh.
You know, Isaiah, chapter 52, and Romans 10, both say, "How beautiful are the feet of those who bring good news." And on the way here, I saw couples walking all over the city together, some hand in hand, and all of them smiling, and that brings joy to my heart because we have a beautiful city. Let's pray. Lord, thank you for this time with these special friends who are serving you. And Lord, tonight, we may not know everything that's going to happen, but you do, so we ask you for guidance. Lord, bless our city. There are some who are hurting and lonely today. Strengthen them, comfort them. Others, Lord, who have much to do and sometimes feel overwhelmed. I pray that you would give them courage and wisdom about the order and steps of their lives. And Father, thank you for these leaders who represent many who serve us in our city. Protect them, guide them, in Jesus' name. Amen. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you very much. Mike, if you'll call the roll, please.
Councilman Blevins.
Here.
Councilman Schlag.
Present.
Councilman Valerius.
Here.
Councilman Sykes.
Here.
Councilman Lloyd.
Here.
Proton Lali.
Here.
And Mayor McCloud.
Here.
We have a forum at Mayor.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Motion, Mayor.
Motion by Mr. Schlag, recommended by Mr. Lally. Any questions or corrections? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion as carried. I would like a motion to approve the minutes for the regular meeting of September 14th.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Valerius.
Second.
Second by Mr. Blevins. Any corrections or changes? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion as carried. Thank you. Organizational business. And for once, you don't have an act to follow.
Hey.
I had to follow the pastor Bosio.
That's always.
It's not easy either. Don't be crowded, though, to complain about. Just a few quick updates. The bridge project over that Wayne County is working on, and old Goddard, Moran and Goddard area, still under construction, still online for mid-November. Talking to Tom this morning, they're doing concrete work on the decking. It looks like they're getting ready to pour the decking in that, so making some progress. They should be on time to be able to open up on schedule mid-November, maybe even earlier than that, we'll see. For Park Avenue, that project is complete, although there is a little bit of restoration still to do on the Marquise portion. There was a side portion of that project. And as the council, somebody asked, Councilman Blevins asked about the porta-jons, we are working on getting those cleaned up and picked up out of the, off that site, so they won't be nuisance to the neighborhood anymore. For Handford, GV Cement has finished the south side concrete, and they are now working on the north side of the street, putting in the, taking out that concrete, putting in the storm sewer crossovers, and they'll be ready to pour concrete here shortly. And that project is still on schedule as well. Getting a little bit closer to the area, that makes me a little bit nervous, probably Tom a little bit nervous in Sohia, but we should be fine. We've had some really good weather to help get moving along after we've had some bad rainstorms, but you know, even if that, we've been able to work through that process there. The Handford water main replacement project is complete. That was all set before, that restoration will be completed with the street, once the street's all done. GV is the general contractor for that as well, and their subcontractors all done. They'll finish that with the regular street improvement project. The Shenandoah project will be finished at the end of this week, and then restoration will be scheduled for sometime in October. I think we're gonna, okay weather for there, that fall weather, better for the grass growth, and so forth. Street section, Savone Cement, they're working across the street here from City Hall, right here on Quant, from Southfield to Dashar. They are finished with the east side of the street, and they are now working on the west side to have that removal, concrete removal, and they're probably about another two to three weeks from getting that all finished up, and that'll make for a smoother ride. When you start looking in that area of the city, we've gotten Quant done, we've got, Beatrice was repaved from Quant Arno. We have Meyer was done. So you start getting those sectors of, like, almost like fingers, getting of those, of that section of the city taken care of, very similar to what we see over on Park Avenue, where we're able to tie in to Thomas and tie into Marquise with some extra work, and really start getting the road system to, getting quadrants at least, taken care of, it seems. Towns has been doing a really good job working on that with the selection of the road and the selection of the street sectioning program itself, and making sure everything kind of ties together. So we're interrupting those neighborhoods for one time, if possible, and then we won't hopefully have to be bothering them for another 25 to 30 years, hopefully longer, so. For, just a reminder, we do have the open house on Thursday night. That'll be from five, or from four o'clock until 6:30 with the ribbon cutting reen around 5:30 or so. If you're running late, that's fine, we'll do the ribbon cutting when everybody gets there. I know we had a couple of schedules that were gonna be a little bit close to that time, so. And just want to let everybody know, for the mayor and council, that Sohia was here earlier, he is providing the refreshments for us. I think we'll have some cookies and some drinks of some sort, so we do appreciate that from him. I sat in my office this afternoon, and I put all the department head's name in a jar, and I shook it up, and I drew one out, and they have no idea whose name was drawn out, but I'm gonna call somebody up here to kind of talk about a program. A little bit of nervousness back there, so, but the selection was actually Chief Ed Can. I told him only about a minute.
[laughing]
Only about a minute, which is gonna be the challenge, but.
My time.
Please, yeah, please. Chief Can sent me an email earlier this week, and, I apologize, last week, and about a program that I think is really interesting, that I think needs to be shared with the council, and it's something I think is really gonna, you're seeing taking off a little bit more, and once I, once he tells you, you're gonna agree with me on that, so. That doesn't happen very often, I understand, but here we go. We'll let Ed talk for a minute, maybe two.
And, is this like dog years?
I'm gonna stand here with the.
The timer. So, thank you for your confidence, and I, look, I wrote notes because he told me five minutes ago.
Yeah. I had to give him a little bit of.
On the back of the agenda, so you know I just grabbed it. So, the fire department recently entered into a subscription with a company called HAAS, H-A-A-S Alerting System, and it is a GPS-based unit that goes in each of our fire apparatus, our ambulances, and our chief vehicles. And it's already being used, and was used previous before we entered into it with the city of Grand Rapids and the Birmingham Fire Department. And Dearborn is currently looking at it now after we have started it. And what it is, their trademark is a safety cloud around the vehicle, and when the emergency master switch is turned on, which activates our emergency lights, it sends out a signal. And if the vehicle is moving, it will send out a signal forward to those that it's about to pass, letting you know that there is an emergency vehicle coming behind you. On the highway, it's about nine football fields, and it's speed-based, so then on Allen Road or Southfield Road, it might be a little closer proximity. That way, you might get an opportunity to look in your mirror and pull over. When the vehicle stops for more than 30 seconds, it becomes a scene, and as long as that emergency master switch is still turned on and we're still on scene, it helps us let somebody that's coming toward the scene know that there's an emergency scene ahead. And as you might recall, in July of 2020, thank you, our ladder got hit on the highway and caused a tremendous amount of damage and could have caused tremendous injury or death. And right around that time, several other fire apparatuses have been hit. It's a big concern for police and fire and DPS when we're working on the roads. This is currently being transmitted to the Waze app. They just entered into an agreement with Stellantis, and this is an experimental agreement to where it might be sent to the display that's on your dashboard that shows your radio stations and so forth. They're working with Apple Maps, and I believe you're slowly gonna see it brought out to many, many other manufacturers. Whether it'll be a requirement or you can opt out, I'm not sure. We have Pierce fire trucks at the Pierce factory in Wisconsin. This is going to be standard equipment in all future vehicles. So it also has what's called a dashboard feature, so that when the lights are off, the GPS is always on. And myself, deputy chief, I'm gonna give a dashboard to our dispatch, one to the officer in charge at the fire station, so that if we receive a call, it's always the officer in charge at the fire station that has the opportunity to say it's Engine Two, Engine One. It just depends who's closer to the scene, right? So he'll have that opportunity to know exactly where they are, if they wind out hospital, which is a little ways away. We can also give one to Roy at the garage if a vehicle is needing repair, and if one of our vehicles is either stolen, or there's a violent incident, or they have one opportunity to call for help, and that's it, we'll know where that vehicle is at. Also, a neat feature, they have an emergency vehicle to emergency vehicle alerting system. It is extra, we haven't offered that yet. There's been problems when two fire trucks are coming to the same intersection, and they run into each other, and it could cause great injury, death, or cost to the cities. And we're doing box alarms now with surrounding cities when there's a major incident to get more fire trucks and firefighters there more quickly. And this is an automatic system. We've started with other downriver mutual aid companies. If they all start having this system being put in their vehicles, then we can have lights inside of our vehicle that will alert us when another emergency vehicle is coming toward us at a hidden intersection. So there's further, there's further features that can be purchased as well. And finally, I want to thank Roy shipment and all the crew at the garage, because they were shipped to us, and they have installed them on our vehicles in order to receive the signal and send it back out.
Sounds sophisticated.
It's pretty cool. Yeah. Any questions?
Yeah, I would assume that this can be used on any emergency vehicle.
That's correct.
For example, we could end up putting them in our police cars.
We could. There's a certain sensitivity to the work that the police do, that sometimes they don't want them there, but the ones that might work, the road patrol that pull people over, it might be good. So we're not quite as sensitive to where we're at. We want people to know where we're at, where the, sometimes the police don't, so that would be something for the chief to consider. But I think you can, from the dashboard, turn on certain units and turn off certain units, so if they're doing detective work or something like that, that might be handy. And often, we do come to the same intersections as the police do when we're both going to a crash and so forth, so it might be handy for that.
We could have used one in Detroit the other day.
Exactly. Yeah.
Ed.
Yes, sir.
You think, you think maybe we could have like a physical, take a look at this and see how it works, right?
Sure.
You know, all you said, all this stuff to me, don't mean nothing.
Right.
You know what I mean? I understand everything is safety.
Yeah, if somebody has a Waze app, we could do a demonstration.
I'd like to see it like a demonstration of.
Sure. Yeah, we could try that.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll set something like that up, maybe with your approval, have a visit at some point to the station.
Yeah, that'd be cool.
Yeah.
And nice to, and nice to follow us.
Yeah. These are, and they got these buttons here, so they keep the collar nice and state as well.
All right. That was a little bit longer, but I figured there was a, we let him go a little bit, I didn't want to pull the hook.
Thank you, Ed.
I think there was a, when he sent that over, I was out of town, but I thought there was something important I wanted to make sure we share with the council on those safety features that we are always looking for. Chief is on top of that with the deputy chief to make sure that the guys are as safe as possible, and ladies, and our crews, our fire crews are as safe as possible. That is everything I have.
Does anyone have any questions, or Mark, about his report?
Thanks, Mark, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, and can I have a motion to accept and file the administrator's report?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Lally.
Second.
Second by Councilman Sykes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, the motion is carried. Now we come to the public comments portion, and I will open this up for public comment if anyone wants to come up, give their name and the street on which they live, and please limit themselves to four minutes.
Thank you. It warmed me up.
Mark the spot.
Mark Bailey, near the intersection of Park Avenue and Philomene. I'd like to, first of all, thank the city council and the city of Allen Park, I'm representing the Allen Park Elks, for letting us host our pumpkin patch on Park Avenue and inside the lodge, where we have the special needs individuals who've been RSVP-ing for 30 years and coming to the function inside, outside. The numbers are there for our outside activities, and I'd like to thank the police department, the fire department, Parks and Rec department, the courthouse, the water department. I'm going to miss some. All the neighbors, the downtown development authority, the Chamber of Commerce, the festivities commission, the civic citizens commission, all the volunteers who help out inside with the special needs function people. Outside, don't know what's going to develop into. Last year, it was minimal. All the sponsors, and I forgot to get this out, I brought my own timer. All the sponsors that have developed.
You're good, still.
I'll speed it up.
You're good.
Over the years, and still looking for, hopefully we'll have some floats there. Working on the lighting of Park Avenue now. We are picking up some pumpkins. Greenfield Village called today or yesterday, I think it was yesterday, said, are we picking them up? I said, yes. She said, okay, the dates are the 10th, the 17th, to the 24th, and they thanked us very much for taking their pumpkins away, so they can carve a fresh thousand pumpkins each week. And as always, we will try to maintain to our best of our ability, the weather is the key factor, maintaining the scenery. Looking for volunteers, want to thank those, the participants who show up to the event because the special needs people inside. It's a, it's a big day for them. And then we'll have entertainment on Sunday from 1 till 5 outside, and then that's one section, and the second section outside is from 5 till 9, and the same guy who's been doing it, Keith Brown, AKA Creepy Clyde. Inside the Elks, our special needs function goes on, and Monday's November 1, and it's time for cleanup, and I want to thank you for the decree. And thank you for letting us do this. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Seeing no other public to comment, we will close public comment section, and we will move on to the consent agenda, which this evening consists of purchasing actions of claims and accounts in the payroll report, and the license and permit for the street closure from the DDA and Mark Bailey for the 33rd annual pumpkin patch, which will of course be held Sunday, October 31st. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Blevins.
Second.
Second by Mr. Lally. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion as carried. Resolution. We have a resolution to award the bid for the replacement of lead water services to Rico Excavating Company in the amount of $275,000, with the funding from the financially distressed cities, villages, and townships grant of $200,000, and the city matching $75,000 pending final contract approval by the city attorney. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Valerius.
Second.
Second by Mr. Schlag. Questions or comments? Someone like to come up and just briefly state what this is about for our televised portion? Mr. Murray.
Hello. This is for homeowners service line that is lead. The state of Michigan, two years ago, passed an amendment to the Safe Drinking Water Act that states cities, townships, and communities that supply water have to start removing lead all the way into the meter of the house at 5% per year over 20 years to hopefully have 100% of the cities without lead service lines. A lot of this is due to the Flint crisis, we all know, happened several years ago. This was a grant that was applied for, we received, and we would be getting about 40 to hopefully 50 service lines in the city replaced. To our knowledge, we have about 170 currently in the city that's left, and this will make a good dent in helping us accomplish this.
And just so everyone knows, we test our water.
Yes, we have to test our year, since they did the amendment, we have to test it every year. This is the third year in a row since that, that we've tested it, and we've never fallen over the threshold of 15 parts per billion. So the water is safe. It's treated, at the GLWA treats it with phosphates and phosphorus, that gives a coating to the pipes. Lead also, people may not know, does not actually get in your water through dissolvment. It's an actual mineral, like metal, if it were to shard off of a pipe or of anything else. It's the only way you can get it in your system, so the water itself don't actually carry it, it just moves it through. I hope that made sense. It's not a dissolved element. A lot of people believe it's in their water. It's not. It's moved through the water system if it gets knocked off.
The reason we use lead is because it doesn't dissolve or react to things.
Uh, I don't know, I think they used lead just because it was easy and pliable as a mineral in the earth that they could just get. It was much cheaper, I'm sure, than copper, so that was probably, I really don't know the reason they did, but they used it in everything, as we know, paint, water, everything.
Thank you very much. There's no further questions. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion as carried. Now we come to council comments. We're warned as forearmed. Mr. Lally is number one tonight.
Well, thank you. I want to thank everyone for coming tonight. Appreciate it. I mean, ain't too many people as citizens tonight, but all the employees from Allen Park over here, and that's just good, because when you see the employees, when you don't see the citizens, it means there's no problem. So that's good. I thank you for doing a good job, for all the employees in Allen Park. I want to thank Mark Bailey. He deserves a big hand of applause for this pumpkin patch, I swear to God. He's been doing that for a long time. I helped, he used to go help, the pumpkins from, what do you call that place? Henry Ford Museum. Yeah, that was, that was a lot of fun. You go there at night, and of course you might, oh, you do it out too much. Yeah, so, thank you, America. Appreciate it. Good men. I just want to thank all the citizens. Oh, by the way, there's a problem with the sound system in here, because a lot of people are, ask me, what happened to the sound? We can't hear you guys say nothing. I don't know. So we have to fix the sound somehow. I told them I mentioned it to Mark, I forgot to tell you beforehand, Mark, but see if you could do something about it. I just want to thank all the citizens for sending me to MML last week, from Tuesday to Friday. That's Michigan, Michigan Musable League Conference. The mayor, Gary and I kept busy the whole time we were there, believe me, we didn't play around, just to eat and dinner, and then go to bed and watch movies. I learned a lot about different communities, about building bridges, putting the power of the create, a trust, and belongs in the residents' hands, which is, that's good. And advancing tools for being a green community. You talk about the dinner and the green stuff that's going on, that's something that should be talked about in neighborhood and neighbors, making room for the, everyone, and, and then we had a little, had a seminar about marijuana, making a marijuana petition to make it, have a ballot put in the, if it is comes when the legal affairs, they want to put the marijuana law and ballot, you know, the people want to pass marijuana law. But I don't believe that's a good idea myself, but it's something that we talked about. It was very interesting to learn about all the stuff that you have to go through to put the ballot together. It's a lot of work. I want to thank everybody for sending me. I'm never too old to learn, just to keep an open mind. That's about it. I just want to thank everyone, and God bless you. Be safe, get your shot, and this flu shot coming up, right? Thank you. And have a good night. How are you?
Hi, thank you. Mr. Lloyd.
As some of you may know, it was a very tough week last week at Allen Park High School. We found out late Wednesday night that one of our seniors, Mia Howard, tragically passed away in a car accident. Seventeen years old, had her younger cousin in the car with her, and she's doing okay. But it's, it's events like that that very much remind me of, of the strength and power of community. When, and we've all suffered it, when we suffer loss, it's like an entire world is destroyed when you lose somebody, you lose that knowledge, you learn, you lose the light that that person brought into the world. And it, it is something that is incredibly difficult to cope with, and I, and I, I many times have reflected that if it wasn't for the community that we have around us all, that it would be impossible. And so I was, I was very impressed with the strength of our community this week, as we mourned the death of Mia and the loss that not having her in our hallways or in our, in our lives anymore has left. So if I could just invite everybody to take a small moment of silence for Mia, I'd very much appreciate it. Thank you.
I don't have much to say as, it seems like lately, I don't have quite as much to say as I once did. I do want to say that I look forward to my message, but I would look, I look forward to seeing everyone at the open house. We have a beautiful new building, and I hope that our residents come out and take a peek. And with that, I yield my time.
Thank you, Pam. Matthew.
I'd like to thank all the department heads and everyone else for being here from the city, and also, Mr. Bailey, thanks for all you do. You know, every year, I think you said it was 33rd year with the pumpkin patch, and I know these last couple of years have been a little tough with the pandemic and everything else, and it's gonna be nice, I think it'll be nice this year to get back to a little bit of a normal type of event, and I appreciate all your dedication and time and everything that you do to help put that together for the city and the residents, so. Touching on my fellow councilman and teacher, you know, he talks about community, and you know, it spreads across boundaries. When, I'm a teacher at Woodhaven High, we all know this, past week, Woodhaven played Allen Park. You know, it's, it's our homecoming week. Very first thing, when our principal and our school community found out about the passing of Mia, our principal put it out there for all the school members, all the, all the students and everything else who were gonna go to the game. He said that despite the fact that we had a Western theme planned, they. a Western theme planned, uh, they found out that Mia's favorite colors were, uh, blue, and he put it out there to have as many students and people attending the game to wear blue. And I think it was pretty well represented, so it stretched across the community. Uh, you know, and I, I think, uh, with the game and it being a military appreciation evening, uh, and everything else, uh, you know, hopefully that support, uh, not only in Allen Park but across boundaries, uh, was something that, uh, you know, not only touched the family and helped them cope with the, the loss of, the tragic loss, but also showed, uh, you know, the strength and resiliency, uh, when communities come together, you know? And, uh, although I wasn't there, and it's tough because I don't know where I would have sat, uh, in regards to, you know, me being a teacher at the school that I am at that pays my salary and me being a representative of the city, but I had a stand like off to the side somewhere, but, uh, it was a phenomenal game, uh, and, uh, like I said, I just, uh, wanted to touch base, uh, and, and, and reflect upon what, uh, you know, my fellow councilman and teacher, uh, you know, we hear these tragedies, uh, too much, and it's, it's, it's really, uh, tough, and, uh, it's something that touches you, uh, as a teacher, as a parent, uh, and just a, you know, as, as a resident of the community, uh, that truly cares about families and students and the people. So with that, my heart goes out to you, all the teachers, the students of Allen Park High School, the staff, everyone, and of course Mia's family, so with that, I yield.
Thank you, Matt. Gary.
I just, I'll just be quick, I want to thank the citizens and thank you to the department heads here present, and I also want to echo the statements of Tony, that the mayor and I, as well as Tony, attended the conference, that we learned a lot of valuable information that we will be sharing with our staff as well as our colleagues up here, because I think there was some amazing ideas we learned. Uh, we definitely buckled in and took notes, especially the note, which is, uh, the mayor is quite the note taker, I think she took more notes than Tony and I combined all conference. But, uh, with that being said, I will also echo the statements of my council members that community is important, and as we get into the holiday season, it's even more important to stay safe, uh, keep aware of everything that's going on around your surroundings because sometimes when the holidays, uh, get there, when you're getting shopping, and especially in malls and others, if anyone does that, and more of all the online shopping, definitely pay attention. And with that, have a continued safe week, and I look forward to seeing everyone on Thursday. I yield my time. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. Charles.
Um, first off, uh, thank you, uh, Chief Ed for the update, and Mark Bailey for coming up and speaking, um, it's always fun taking the pumpkins, um, Sundays at night, so if anyone wants to go, come and help out picking up pumpkins and help, uh, Mark Bailey, um, because again, thousand, thousand pumpkins, uh, per week, so, and especially if you have a truck, that would be wonderful as well. Um, not like my little, uh, Chevy Spark, can't really do anything to help out, but, um, uh, also, um, as I was driving around the city, looking at things, I noticed, I don't know when it was put up, um, but at the tot lot on Park Avenue, they have the new communication board, um, up there, so it looked very nice and, uh, good job with the fundraising and having that put up in the park. Um, also, uh, saw that, uh, make sure you, uh, support small businesses, um, this October, October first will be the third year anniversary for the Difference Nutrition, right by, um, Marshall Music and the Broadcast Booth, um, if you haven't been there, they have, uh, uh, shakes and t, uh, nutrition teas and stuff like that, so go support them, third year in the city. Um, when I heard about, um, yeah, it brought back, it's, it brought back memory, like sad memories, because when I was in high school, uh, one of my friends passed away due to a car crash, Vince Polaski, Enric Road, so it really, it, I, I, and why I'm wearing bright, a bright color today is to please, um, when you're going to drive, if you're going to work or going anywhere, if you feel like you're going to be late, drive, get, like, leave earlier and all that stuff, um, especially with winter coming up, mat's very, uh, season, um, it gets darker quickly, when you wake up at seven in the morning with school and all that stuff, it's still dark out, please wear bright colors if you're going for a walk or jog or anything like that. Um, and then, uh, just be careful when driving, I know like with this past year where everyone's staying inside with the pandemic and everyone's anxiety and wanting to get places quickly, but just please be careful when driving and, um, because you never know, uh, if kids like going to school and all that stuff, it's just a safety thing. Um, I can't wait for, uh, Thursday for the ribbon cutting for our new, uh, public service building, uh, it's like, it, can't wait to see in fifty years that, it's like, the roof will still be there. Talking about roof's last meeting, but, um, and then can't wait for our, um, uh, work session meeting next week, and thank you to all the residents, always, uh, for everything. Uh, the Allen Park Today magazine came out this week, um, please make sure, if you haven't gotten it, um, they also have extras here at the, the city halls. Um, with that, God bless, stay positive, and I yield.
Thank you, Charles. Michael.
Thank y'all for coming out, God bless you and good night.
You always get a shot at. Um, couple of things, well, first of all, um, repeat the condolences to Mia Howard's family. I, uh, saw that earlier, um, it popped up on my Facebook page as a article from the News Herald. I want to thank Chief Egan and, uh, our, uh, school resource officer for going to the viewing, uh, today, it was all, it's all out at Michigan Memorial. Um, I had written down, um, a few things, I pulled, I pulled part of the, um, obituary, um, in case nobody sees it. A lovely young woman, not going to read the whole thing, she was seventeen years old. She was a beloved daughter, sister, granddaughter, niece, girlfriend, and, uh, the parent of a furry family. Uh, it stated that she was caring, loving individual, an honor student who loved animals. What she will never be is a wife and mother, or what she aspired to be in life. And I cannot imagine anything worse in life than losing a child. So my deepest condolences to the family, and God bless you. Thought I could hold it together better. On a different note, um, I don't know, I get the Downriver News Herald, and, um, would like to extend congratulations to Merrill and Adeline Maluski, who celebrated seventy-five years of marriage on August thirty-first. And if you get a chance to read their full story in the News Herald, I encourage you to do so, if you go to the website and search, uh, milestone anniversary, um, again, terrific article, take the time to read it. Uh, also, um, I know we've had a lot of talk here, um, in previous months about our hometown uh, girl, Amanda Chittister, and, uh, we were hoping that she would be in town for an extended period of time when we could recognize her at a council meeting, unfortunately, we just learned that she is going to be in town for a few hours on Monday. And, um, Cabrini High School is going to hold a brief ceremony, hopefully, they said they would be able to hold it on their football field, but it's going to be, the event will begin at two fifteen, because apparently she is leaving for somewhere right after that, so, um, that's all the information I have, is going to be at Cabrini on the football field at two fifteen PM, and if it's inclement weather, they will move into the gym, but, uh, I will be there, uh, to represent any other council person I think that would, is able to attend. Uh, I'm going to be very brief in the comments they allow me to say because they are the ones that are going to do the full-blown coverage, um, but we will be, uh, giving her a proclamation, and I will read that at our first October meeting, but I will give it to her in person on Monday. Um, I think that's it for me, um, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion.
Motion by Mr. Lally.
Second.
Second by Mr. Lloyd. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, we are adjourned at six forty-one.